Good evening. Could you please stand and join me with for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. Tonight we are holding a special planning board meeting that has been advertised and that will be the first few cases that we hear this evening. After that we will be adjourning and then going into a normal workshop. So that being said, I want you to please be aware of the fire exits. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and please do not use the elevator. The meeting notes are taken by the secretary for the purposes of a record and minutes. So please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and please speak into the microphone. The meeting minutes are not intended for a verbatim record but only to indicate the sum and substance of the proceedings. Tonight's meeting and workshop is being recorded on I by our ICAT department and is available for viewing on channel thirteen oh three, I believe, of the spectrum. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda and that will include the special meeting as well as the workshop. With the copies of an agenda close to the door for anybody that's in here, after each case has been called, the applicant and/or his agent shall come to the podium to present their case. During this time, the planning board members will have an opportunity to question and comment on the case. The first part will be a public hearing. Once we adjourn the special meeting, it will no longer be a public hearing, it will turn into a workshop. But for the public hearing, I will open up the cases for public input and I believe both cases are still open for public input on the agenda tonight. And anyone wishing to speak regarding the case will come to the podium, state your name and address, and direct your comments to the board. Once a public input has been received, the applicant and/or his agent or their agent will be given an opportunity to respond to the public input. Once all the public input has been completed, the chair will close the public input and the board will move into a decision phase of the evening. No further input is allowed after that point or at that point. And I think we're ready and you can go ahead and call the first case. Should we move the podium by the way? Do you want some help?
It's not set up.
Okay, you're gonna have him sit up there?
It's not set up.
Okay, never mind.
It's not set up, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
I don't have anything heavy with this.
And I want to remind the applicants that there are four board members up here today. You will need a unanimous decision for the case to be approved tonight. All right?
Thank you. First case on the agenda is case number PB twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash one. Request by Titus Management Corp. for signage approval to replace existing signage on premises seven forty-five Titus Avenue in the mixed-use commercial district.
Thank you very much. And you just want to go over and just give us a quick explanation? I know that we've talked a couple workshops on this case. Just what you're wanting to do and if there's any questions and the board can direct them towards you.
Sure. My name's Frank.
My name's Frank. Seven forty-five Titus Avenue. This building has been a daycare center. We've been operating. We've got a tenant there since nineteen eighty-six. It's been continuously operated.
Light on, there you go.
Light on, there we go. And the three signs, there's one on the north side of the building at the driveway entrance. It's a freestanding two-sided monument-style sign. There's a sign on the front of the building, the front entrance or on the transom over the front door with a new name on it. And there's also a smaller sign on the back of the building at the which is really the main entrance where the children are dropped off and picked up. If you take a look at the application that we submitted, under section D, it shows the three signs and the three sizes of these signs. As you know, in the MUC, the mixed-use district, there is no sign definition as far as sizes and locations. It's up to the planning board to make that decision. So we believe we're in compliance by using the previous sizes and the previous locations of the signs. That's the quick story.
Thank you. Does any of the board have questions at this moment? Then I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to come forward and speak on this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does the board have any other questions for? The only question I have and just to clarify, I know we've asked these questions, the sign is not illuminated.
No, none of the signs are illuminated.
Great. I think we are through with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for seeker, this is a type-two action. I just wanted to say that for the record. And does anybody have any questions or would like to make a motion on this?
I would make a motion. I would move that on PB two zero two three dash zero eight dash one, that we approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Great. I don't hear any other comments. We'll go ahead and call the take about everybody in favor?
Aye.
Negative, and there are two absents. Thank you very much.
Next case on the agenda is case number PB twenty twenty-three dash oh six dash five. Requested by Salvatore Lighierdello Esquire, acting as agent for B&amp;R Breeze Enterprises, LLC, for preliminary site plan approval for a change in use to operate a restaurant or eating establishment, drinking establishment, grills, bars, with seating provided for more than thirty patrons on premises forty-three forty-eight Culver Road in a C business district.
Thank you very much. And if you would like to go ahead and explain to us once again what the project is that you're trying to seek approval for tonight?
Sure thing. So my client, B&amp;R Breeze Enterprises, LLC, operates the Blue Palm Grill at forty-three forty-eight Culver Road. They took over a restaurant that was approved for seating for thirty or less and they want to provide additional seating for their patrons. Town code required them to obtain a special use permit, which we did obtain. Also, the parking requirement for onsite parking was not met, so we did have also obtained an area variance for the parking, which in addition to that, also obtained a license to park cars at Parkside Diner for the parking requirement. So this application was for the change of use. The last workshop meeting, we had a pretty long conversation about my general thoughts on, you know, the nature of this application and then also going into detail about the comments that this board made. Several of those comments were addressed, like cleaning up the dumpster enclosure area. We got rid of the one dumpster that was outside the enclosure. The dumpster that was inside the enclosure is now being picked up more frequently. But I did have objections to some of the other comments about, you know, relocating that enclosure, replacing it, also with the screening that was in place. And if this board would like to, you know, get into those more, I can, but I think we talked about them at great length at the last workshop meeting. So this really what this application boils down to is us putting more chairs out for our patrons. We can have seventy-five people can be inside the restaurant right now. So, you know, if we deny this application, all that's gonna mean is that we can't provide seats for those patrons. Those patrons would be standing by the bar instead or, you know, whatever, instead of being in a seat. We just want to have the chairs out there for them so they can sit down and eat dinner as quick as possible. And I also anticipate this board might have some questions about the notice of violation that was issued by the deputy fire marshal, Pat Hudson. I have made several attempts to contact Mr. Hudson and discuss this, but he has not returned any of my calls. But I have spoke with my client about it and I think I am familiar with, you know, what's been going on, if any board members would have some questions for me pertaining to that.
And I want to make sure you're aware that this is the same letter that we received also, right?
I can't see it from here, but if it's the same one that Michelle sent to me.
And your client is aware of it as well?
Yes.
All right.
It was provided to us like around four-thirty this afternoon.
Is there a site plan for this project?
Yes, we submitted one.
Can I see it?
Sure. I don't have the big print with me, but I have a small print.
I've not seen one at all. So is my problem with this whole application? Is we've not? Is that the current conditions?
Yes, I provided like about thirty.
So there's no changes at all you're proposing?
No, no, no changes.
So can you talk to me about the fenced-in area up front?
Fenced-in area up front?
The place where you have currently seating in umbrellas?
Yes, that was all there. Mozzarella's put that in. All that fenced-in area.
Did they have a liquor license?
I'm, I don't know.
Okay. Have you talked to SLA about containing that area?
Yes, my understanding is that there is not liquor served out in that area.
Okay, so how is that being solved, that there's no liquor being taken out there?
We make sure that.
Is it the honor system or you have a guard standing there? What is it?
Standing out by the front door.
That's a permanent employee that'll be standing at that front door?
Correct.
Okay. And I would like to see a bike rack on that property at some place. You're sitting right on a bicycle path for the town and that's one of the requirements we normally put for any business and I think I've mentioned it before. And finally, I noticed that the there's miler or something on the windows that is not allowing visibility through on the inside the restaurant. Is that something that was added or is that always there?
I don't believe anything was added, like, I don't know. Yeah, no, they didn't do anything to the windows.
Okay.
Miler, like some kind of like tent or something?
Yeah, there's a tinting on there that you can't see through.
Yeah, that everything was already like that.
Okay. That I think we should probably discuss about changing that.
About?
There's in code that has to be visible from the street into the restaurant. It's not, I'm not making it up, it's in the code.
Okay, do you know where?
There's a visibility requirement. I know staff can get it for you right away if.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact code section, but there's a requirement for a percentage of glass to be transparent. I don't remember exactly where it is.
What's the percentage now?
It looks like you only have the top part of the windows that are clear. You should be telling me what the percentage is actually. Can you tell me what that is?
We didn't change any of that, right? So that was all pre-existing site.
So you're in here for a site plan review and this is one of the parts of the site plan that's not meeting code, so we want that to be changed?
I believe that might be what the code says right now. I think if we were to install a new window, it would have to meet the latest and greatest site design criteria. We aren't proposing to make any changes or construct anything. Anything that's there is pre-existing.
Okay, so the things that I've just now asked you for is things that I'm gonna be making my consideration. And remember that you need all four votes.
So you want us to install a bike rack outside now as well? Is that what you're asking?
You're on a bike path. We have a transportation plan in the town that is tries to encourage active transportation that would include bicycling. So the way to encourage bicycling is to have a place to start when you've reached your destination, right?
Yeah, that makes sense, requiring that if a property owner were to construct the new site, that you might consider that when they're developing a new site.
Okay.
What we have here, I'm just, I'm gonna reiterate my point before, is a commercial plaza that's been around for a long time. We don't own that. Any inch outside of the premises which Blue Palm leases is common area that is owned, controlled, maintained by the landlord.
Would that include that seating area out front?
I believe that is part of the Blue Palms. I, that's what Mozzarella's.
So it's not all of it that's in control of the landlord and not in control of the Blue Palm?
That fenced-in area that's up against the building, I believe.
Okay, I'm just asking you because you represented to me that anything that was outside the restaurant.
Outside the leases.
Belonged to the common area. Okay, I'm gonna stop asking questions and let my fellow board members talk to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on a couple of your points. I think the way that at least I'm looking at this is this application is in front of us for site plan review. And that is mainly triggered, as I understand it, due to a change in use. So we have a massive change in the intensity of the use because of the special use permit that you were granted. So as we're now reviewing this, there are changes to the intensity of the use. While you got a parking variance and allowance, there are things like bike racks that we look at under that, especially since we have not enough parking for the number of seats and so on. It makes sense that people might bike to this location. And things like window film and things that are not compliant unfortunately become part of your issue as your application because as you have changed the use and changed the intensity, we are now reviewing this as a preliminary in site plan review, which allows us to review those things. And that's how at least I think a couple of the members are viewing this and looking at this. This is the only opportunity we get to make a compliant property or as close to compliant as possible. So I think that's where the chairman is coming from, or at least where I'm coming from. So I just wanted to state that it's not specific to any one issue, but just sort of my stance on this whole thing.
Mr. Chairman, I think it sounds like we have a miscommunication. It sounds like there, I think, I think the lawyer's read the, read the code. Has he spoken to our lawyer as far as the interpretation what that code means so he can become compliant if he's not out of compliance?
I don't know if there's code compliance. I mean, we can, there's, you know, hours of operation and my understanding code enforcement issues unrelated to the site plan per se. But, you know, my understanding is there, from the workshop which I was in at, there was a discussion about how much can be controlled outside of what Blue Palm is actually leasing. And I think there's fair points raised that the, the site as a whole, I believe there's three, three users to the, are there more?
It's three or four.
Three or four users. I think at the same time Spencer raises a good point about the change of intensity. So I think it's in that gray area about, you know, how much essentially that can be sort of required as an improvement versus, you know, is this, you know, required as, you know, is the intensity justifying the request? And I think that's, that's a judgment call. I don't think it's formulaic. So I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, in fairness to the applicant, you know, it was used as a restaurant before. It's not as if, you know, it was an accounting office and now a restaurant's coming in. So I think, you know, while there's, there's certainly changes to the intensity, I think, you know, it's worth considering that, you know, it was a restaurant before. So, you know, obviously up to, you know, the planning board to, you know, impose, you know, conditions, you know, as you see fit for, you know, the site plan factors that you have to consider. So, you know, I, I don't know if there's a straight answer on it, so.
Since there's not a straight answer, would it be beneficial for the applicant to sit with the staff and go through the issues to make sure that they're compliant and not compliant? What I hate to see is a viable business in Aranda Quaid be unable to do business because of mouse turds. You know, we have to stop bullwadding over mouse turds. And at the same time, if those mouse turds become dinosaur turds, then we have to correct them. And I think we're somewhere in the middle of that right now. So would it be possible to withdraw the application, sit with the staff, go through item by item with your legal input in order to correct and not correct what's there?
So I, I mean, I would, I don't think they need to withdraw. I think, you know, perhaps, you know, agreeing to adjourn to next meeting is probably, you know, helpful. I don't know if, there just seems to be a disagreement as to, you know, where that line is. And, you know, I don't know, Kate, from the engineering perspective, if, you know, you want to weigh in from LaBella's perspective. I know there's been a pretty in-depth analysis about, you know, the engineering on the site and safety and so forth, but.
Sure. Kate Powers, LaBella Associates. So in response to the request or potential request for staff to go through this site plan with the applicant, I would, I'm gonna speak for staff and say that staff does, that is not their preference because this is site plan review. It is the planning board that decides the conditions of this site. Sure, we can, we can talk about code enforcement and those sort of things, but as you all know, you weigh multiple factors. You look at circulation, you look at place making, you look at visibility, you look at all these different things and you come together with your own expertise to either approve or deny an application. Or if an application is not quite there, you put conditions on. I'm explaining something you already know, but what I'm trying to say is it's up to your discretion of do we feel that there would be a greater connection between the business and the public realm and pedestrians if there was greater visibility, right? Taking off that film. Do we think that this plan would be greater, in more compliance with Aranda Quaid's active transportation plan if there were a bike rack there? So, sure, staff could go through and give their opinions, but it's not really staff's place. It's the planning board, you all as appointed officials to make those decisions. So.
Yeah, I just feel that we're doing one more and one more every time, every time that they come up. That's my opinion. And in reading the, and reading this document is very different than what I witnessed with my own eyes. Cause I have gone out, because they were coming here last week and sat outside without them knowing I was here and observed the guard stopping people, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what I observed with my own eyes. And they didn't know I was there, they didn't know I was present, et cetera. I just sat outside and observed because I knew they were coming here tonight. So this kind of feels to me like the Aranda Quaid Mall before, before it was destroyed because of rumors. So, so I wanna kind of back up a little bit and see what we can fix. If the film needs to be removed, I'm pretty sure the applicant removed the film. I'm pretty sure there's not a problem with a bike rack, even though there's a mixed-use facility. I just don't know what else they can do to fix the problem. And I don't know what else the code calls for that that's in our purview.
My main concern was that there's been no updated site plan on this. Even if you gave us a new site plan that was of no changes, what you did was provide us an existing condition site plan. And I can get that, every applicant will do that. It would make it a lot easier for me to say, this would probably be, be a good place for a bike rack, but I don't have a plan in front of me that says anything that you guys want to do. The other thing is when we approved the special use permit, and I'll give you a chance here to talk in a second, we said we would mitigate what we could through the planning process through site plan to ensure that this was going to be compatible with the neighborhood. And the fifth or sixth point on here is that parking along Mary Knoll at times blocks access to residents' driveways, which we were assured was not going to happen. And now I'm seeing it from the fire marshal telling me that it is. And that's a concern. Now how do I mitigate that? Because that was one of the things that I said I would do in the site plan review when I don't have a site plan.
Mr. Chairman, when I was sitting outside about three houses back, what I witnessed was the security guard moving cars that went beyond the building and having them turn around and park elsewhere. So that's, that's what I observed.
I, I agree with both of you. But I'm, you know, the fire marshal is reacting to the neighbors complaining. So that's where I'm at with this. I'm gonna let John with any questions you might have.
My, my one question for staff is, you know, as it relates to the fire marshal's letter, you know, it looks like he might be looking for compliance, you know, immediately. Do you know like a specific date of when they're gonna be following up regarding these items or?
I currently don't have that information. But I believe that this is fairly recent, so I would anticipate, well, I guess I'm not sure what I would anticipate. So we don't know the answer to that at this time.
Can we request that the fire marshal be here to present information? If he has, he says he has film and pictures, I would like to see that before I make that judgment based on what he is complaining about. If he claims he has evidence, we don't have any evidence before us.
Yeah, I would imagine that we could do most anything and requesting the fire marshal would be something that we certainly could do or at least getting a timeline on why or when this was going to be addressed. And some of this is town board stuff and some of it's code enforcement stuff, not necessarily all. Fire marshal, I think he's the one who's generated the report for us. I'm not sure that he has the authority to mitigate everything or to correct everything here, but I'm not speaking with any good knowledge on this.
Yeah, cause if there's nine-one-one calls, there should be police reports that says this is a violation, police responding X to X number of calls and I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, most of this stuff.
I'm not saying the fire marshal doesn't have integrity. The fire marshal has integrity. I just need the, just like we had to provide evidence going through the why we, why we agreed to something last time, the fire marshal also have to provide evidence of what he's saying here. Cause a verbal complaint that doesn't tell me anything, that means I'm pissed off at somebody and I see X planes. He, if he has evidence, then present the evidence.
Yeah, I agree with you. But I think right now what we have going forward is a site plan review. And I think what I'd like to do at this point, without any further objection, is go ahead and open up the public hearing and then I'll give you a chance to come back and address anything that the public may have been saying or anything from the board that you would like to address. So why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing? Anybody that would like to speak on this case, I'm encouraging them to come forward and present either in favor or against whatever anybody would like to do? Seeing no one coming forward for the public hearing, should I keep the public hearing open or close it?
Keep it, I'll keep it open.
Keep it, I'll keep it open.
It's up to the board. Keep it open?
In my, in my opinion, that depends on what happens moving forward here.
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked about, we've, we've talked about, you know, unfortunately, the scenario of the fact there's only four members here tonight and what that means. Um, I think that depends a little bit on what the applicant wants to do with his application.
Right.
So I would say leave it open for the moment. We can always close it.
Yep, we'll leave it open for the moment. So you can go ahead and address whatever we've said, obviously, because nobody from the public has come forward. At least not here.
Yeah, that's correct. So, uh, there's a lot that was said. I'm going to try to go somewhat in order, but as far as the parking on Mary Knoll goes, um, as Board Member Evan said, there is someone there that directs cars not to park there. Um, we also have signs up on the building that says, actually, I have a picture of the sign, I believe, that it essentially says, don't block, don't park in front of houses on Mary Knoll, don't block driveways. Outside of that, there's only so much the Blue Palm can do as far as directing, uh, members of the community parking in a public right of way, you know, unless you gave them a badge and a gun, right? Like there's only, they can tell them, hey, follow the rules. People are kind of, you know, break rules on occasion, right? So they have done everything within their control, everything feasible, staffing someone, putting up signs, directing people how to behave, how to park. And, and there's ample parking there, right? We have not just the parking that's on our site, we have the parking in the right of way, which the ZBA was comfortable approving an area variance based on that alone. But in addition to that, we took the additional step of securing a parking license with Parkside Diner that we also direct patrons to park to. Um, so I, I really think that that's been addressed. I know the fire marshal said that he's received complaints about that. I don't know the date of those complaints. I know when we first started this process, you guys were here, right? There were some neighbors that, that said that to the board. Oh, their patrons block, they park in our right of way, even though it's not their right of way, but obviously people can't block driveways. So we took steps after that date to correct that. We have videos, surveillance cameras that are outside that building. When the Blue Palm closes, there, there's still cars parked all up and down Mary Knoll. So the Blue Palm patrons aren't the ones parking on those, on, on that street. Um, you know, we know that the residents said they don't have driveways, so they, um, you know, they park their cars. There really isn't room for Blue Palm patrons to park, but I can submit this to the town, but you know, this is the, the signs that they have posted. It says additional parking in rear of building. Please be mindful of our neighbors on Mary Knoll Drive, then in all caps, do not block residences. Thank you. So, you know, we put that up there to, to let people know. After that, I mean, there, there's only feasibly so much they can do about that. Um, with that letter, it was dated nine seven, so I'm under the belief that the violation discussed was observed on that date.
I'm going to ask you what letter is dated nine seven?
Sorry, the, um, notice of, notice of violation that was dated nine seven.
Mine's dated nine eighteen.
That's the memorandum that was sent. Uh, there was a notice of violation issued to Blue Palm.
Okay.
On September fourteenth. That notice was dated September seventh. That was based on, and, and it said in the notice of violation that it was observed during a site inspection of the property. We reviewed surveillance footage and we do not believe that the fire marshal actually performed the site inspection, uh, at least on that date that he said he did. So I'm concerned that the notice is based on hearsay.
I just want to remind you that that's not going to be anything that we're going to be considering tonight.
Okay, but it was brought up and you mentioned it as a chief concern of yours, so I thought it was worth mentioning that that report.
Now, I was concerned with the parking and we granted a special use permit or recommended one, saying that we would mitigate any of those problems.
Right.
And I'm, you remember, you were here.
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
And I also informed you that the way we would mitigate that was by placing signage and staffing someone. Um, as I've shown you, and I can submit those pictures if we need them, we did do the signage. Again, that was a comment that we addressed. You know, there, there were a lot of comments made towards the Blue Palm, all of them that we have control to address, we did. We can staff an employee to monitor it, we did that. We can put up a sign to direct customers, we can do that. As far as erecting structures, which if you're putting a, even something as simple as a bike rack, that would be considered a structure, that's something that's outside of the applicant's control. Um, and about that film on the window too, I, I believe you that that problem, that is a, in the town code. I don't know what level, I know like cops carry little readers they use on cars and stuff to gauge the transparency of a surface. I don't know what the current reading of that would be, and I, I don't, I would have to look into that, to be honest with you. But I also think that it was probably put in to serve a purpose, to shield any residences nearby from like TV lights and lights that are inside of a bar, and that it probably serves a benefit to the community in so much that it screens the business from the residences nearby. And that removing that may actually be a detriment to the neighborhood. So I, I would like the board to consider that as much as that they would like to impose it as a condition, it may actually be creating an issue. Cause I, I think right now it does, when you drive by, it's, not, it doesn't stick out. You know, it's not visually unappealing. It kind of, you know, blends in, especially at nighttime. I think it's a benefit to have not bright lights shining, um, with the neighbors nearby. And I, I just, I think it's worth considering before imposing that as a condition. Um, you know, the bike rack thing, I, I think it's a great, I, I personally think, uh, if I lived nearby, it would be nice to have one there. Um, but I, the Blue Palm Grill is not going to erect, erect structures on their landlord's property without their landlord's permission. And so I, I couldn't even make, like concede to that or accept that as a condition without discussing with the landlord. In previous discussions, I don't believe he wants to see any, you know, new structures erected on the property. Uh, it's just, I did not ask him though, and I certainly can, um, you know, if he'd be willing to consider that. But, uh, trying to think what else. As far as the site plan too, this is, uh, what I submitted, and it, this is a small version, obviously. I submitted like twenty-four large prints, cause I did them, twelve copies for here. Michelle knows, I brought in a whole box of papers. Um, and then also for the town board, there's a bunch floating around this building. Um, that was a site plan that was prepared for the Blue Palm that was, and yeah, it basically is an as-built, right? Because we're not changing anything. Uh, and I think that also kind of circles back to, you know, my objections with the nature of this site plan application as it is, was brought up, change of use. Well, there's a change of use here, the use change, change of use. That is defined, it's defined in the town code, and it's defined as a change in the nature of the use. I submitted to this board respectfully, and I will reiterate that, uh, consideration that a, a restaurant with thirty seats versus a restaurant with sixty is not a change in the nature of the use. It might be a change in the intensity of the use. I don't think it's a change in the nature, and I think that is important. And also when we're sitting here, what is the town trying to prevent when it's doing this site plan application? There's obviously a number of things, but in talking with a lot of people within the town, the, what I gathered is the town doesn't want this to turn into like a bar nightclub, dance, dance party, club. We're trying to prevent that too by adding more seats. From what I can gather, if this board denies this application and we appeal it and that gets denied too, then we're stuck with thirty seats. We're still allowed to have seventy-five people in there. So now they're just going to be gathering by the bar, standing around, and it, it will turn into a bar. I, I think, you know, what we're trying to do here is not have it turn into a, a bar nightclub kind of place by putting out all these chairs and seating. And I, I, I can understand where the board's coming from with all these concerns, I, I really can, but I, I think that by putting out the chairs, we are trying to make this a restaurant. We want people to sit down, eat dinner, have a couple of drinks, watch the game, and go home. And, you know, that's, that's the purpose of putting more chairs out. And if we only have thirty chairs, then that means the other, you know, forty, forty people are standing by the bar. And it, you know, that, uh, it's counterproductive, I, I, I think. And I, I think that for the seating that we want to have, that we have addressed all those things. The ZBA looked very closely when it granted the parking variance, we have the license to park at Parkset on top of that. And, you know, we really are trying to control patrons that come in. Some of the neighbors said, and it, it was repeated from what was said at the board meeting, that they saw people urinating, uh, outside. Like, I, I don't know what else we could do to prevent something like that. I, I think if, if that does happen, I think the neighbor should tell us, and we can submit that video to, we can let the police review that video if they need it. Like, we're happy to, you know, try to crack down on stuff like that. If there's rowdy kids coming through the parking lot, I want to know when it happened. And that's what I called the fire marshal. I said, hey, I noticed you said on nine seven, a bunch of rowdy kids came through, that, that's the language that was used in the notice of violation. When did you observe that? Or if someone called it in, when did they see us? Let us know, we'll pull up the videos and get to the bottom of it. Um, he still has yet to return my call, I'd love to talk to him about it, but, you know, we, we want to crack down on stuff like that too. It's frankly, it's, it's not good for business if it's, you know, we want this place to have a nice reputation and, you know, all these, these negative things that other, you know, neighbors are seeing. I, I think it's good that they're bringing it up and we're happy to correct it any way that we can, working with the Aranacoye PD. I do know that the, they came down one time because of false, uh, some, one of the neighbors told the cops that they saw twenty people fighting outside. So cops showed up in droves and said, there's no fight here, what's going on? And they talked with the owners of Blue Palm and they said, yeah, no, we haven't had any problems with this place. We get a couple of calls from a couple of neighbors, but we haven't had any problems here from Aranacoye PD. So, and you're happy to ask them about that too. You know, I, I really think what we have is a couple neighbors, same, probably the same group of neighbors that came out to the first few meetings, that are not happy with the business that's there, and they're making a lot of calls to certain people within the town. And I understand they have an obligation to investigate if they're receiving calls. Um, but I don't believe that, you know, what was in that letter was based on firsthand observations of the fire marshal. Um, and I, I'm happy to talk to him, I'm dying to talk to him, I've called him at least three times and left him messages. I hope he calls me tomorrow morning. But as far as the site plan goes, I, I don't think that stuff is really, really necessary for the site plan. Um, but in any event, I, reading between the lines of what's been said at this meeting and, and just listening, and I think it might be best if we, um, postpone this to the, uh, next meeting to make a final determination and, um...
So the applicant is asking us for an adjournment until next month?
Um, well, no, to the, uh, when's the next meeting? Yeah, it's a, I thought it was on a weekly, yeah.
I'm not sure, it cannot happen that quickly. I think there's a ten-day period that it has to be, um, published because this is still a public hearing.
Right.
So it would be the...
Getting the sense that a few of the members of this board...
It would be next month.
Are still not satisfied with what's been presented to them. And, um...
In, in my opinion, and I'm one person, okay? Um, I believe it would probably be the most beneficial for you as the applicant to come to a full workshop. Unfortunately, this was a special meeting situation because of what happened last month. Hear what hopefully the full board has to say as far as issues that, you know, we're talking about, whether it be bike racks, whether it be tint, whether it be parking lot striping, lighting's been mentioned, whatever it is, right? We get this all out on the table officially, right? In a workshop situation, so that you can go with your client and/or with the landlord if need be, and have some of these discussions, you know, about things like bike racks and so on. Um, I, I will tell you, we have had other applications where tenants have come in and we have had much larger conversations about landscaping and signage and sight lighting and all sorts of things that they had to go back to their landlords with and address. And that's the nature of getting an approval. So it's not unheard of, it's not like it's not done, you know, we just did it last year on, on a relatively major one. So those things can be done. I have a hard time believing that a landlord would not allow a tenant to put in a five-hundred-dollar bike rack that just is four bolts to a sidewalk or to a patio area or something. Um, I have a really hard time accepting that. So I think getting all these issues out in a workshop so that they can be known, it's not just, you know, the, the four of us here today, and then addressing those in the time period between the workshop and the next public hearing, and then having a full board at the public hearing, hopefully, you know, will potentially yield you what you're looking for. But I'm one person saying that. So that would be my suggestion, but you're the applicant, so.
And, and in my opinion, the dumpster is still an issue. So I would have a, um, a conversation with the land, because the intensive use of the restaurant is being used more, et cetera. Uh, so for him to have a restaurant in that building, uh, which is more intense than the last restaurant, I think he has to address the, uh, I'm not sure what the right mechanism of that is. Uh, I'll leave that to legal, but that's, that's still an issue for me.
I, I think the applicant has, um, heard a lot of our comments. I think it's going to be very helpful to follow Mr. Reed's, um, suggestion. And with your, um, agreement, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn this case until next month. Do I have a second?
Excuse me, before we do this, can I just discuss that with my client to make sure? I realize I committed him to something without checking with him first.
Sure, if that's, you're more comfortable doing that, sure.
Yeah, I don't, it, you know, it's his business, I don't want to... I'm going to be really, I apologize. Yes, and the advice of my client and, um, through the board members, uh, I've, yeah, we're going to adjourn this till we get the full board here, cause, um...
So upon the applicant's request, I will renew my motion that we adjourn this case until next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chair Richards, can I just clarify something real quick?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to, um, let the applicant know that the, the use of the property as a bar restaurant with sixty-eight seats is not in jeopardy of being denied. You, that has already happened and it is...
Right.
You already have it. So regardless of what happens with the site plan, you can still have that use. Um, and so at, and I believe that you're also not in jeopardy of, um, having to halt operations, at least, at, at least in terms of how it relates to the site plan. Um, and so there really isn't such an urgency, I would assume, to get approvals as soon as possible, just because the use is already approved. And this board cannot, yeah, and this board cannot say you can, you have to have less seats. You are entitled to sixty-eight seats, that has been approved, it's only the town board that has that.
So devil's advocate, if this board said the present site plan application is denied, what would happen?
Then you would, you would be cited for being, um, not, for not conforming with, well, if it was denied, you would still have to come back and get an approved site plan. Um, so you still need to do that part, but you can, you can operate. I'm just saying in terms of you're not in jeopardy to have to halt operations.
But I thought you said that if it got denied, they would cite us for violating something that would jeopardize the operations.
Sure, so I, I guess I'll...
That's why I'm confused, and that's why... That's why I'm confused, and that's why I brought up the point about like why I really didn't think it was subject to a site plan review.
I get what you're saying.
I know you...
I'm, I'm going to push you as far as I can on the things that we want.
Because I'll talk to you about, until midnight about this, we can keep going.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do that, to be honest with you, as interesting as the case is. But why don't we proceed to move forward for next month? I can tell you the bike rack, I don't think there's going to be anybody on this board that's not going to want that. We've required it every place that we've, that have come before us, even places that look like they would be drive-through only, like the Chick-fil-A. We've had them put in a bike rack. And I realize that that's a new build, but we did it at the blood donation place at Hudson and Ridge. That was a repurpose, and they put in a bike rack. They had to redo their landscaping as well. We're not requiring you to do that, but there are some things that we've asked for that we'd like to see put on this site plan. You can just draw them in on your existing plan where you guys think. And I would like the SLA to have a comment on that open patio in the front, because that to me seems like a little bit of a risky area for you guys to lose your liquor license quicker than anything else by a patron coming out there and walking out, or an underage person walking on and grabbing something. I think that is in your best interest to probably fence that off totally with a gate. The applicant that was just here before you, applied for a restaurant and has an outside seating area that is totally gated off because he knows there's going to be alcohol that's going to leave the inside of the restaurant and walk outside, but it's going to walk into a confined area. So that's my encouragement for you.
Thing is, with that patio, you can't even get to there unless you walk through the front door.
That might be the best thing to ensure that alcohol doesn't move.
You can't get directly from the inside of the building to the patio.
You can get from the outside of the building.
Outside of the building, right, so someone would have to sneak past the security guard, then walk around to the front. I'm sure it's, you know, people shoplift and...
But people are taking food out there, right?
I think right now it's mostly just people go, step outside for like a smoke break or something like that.
Okay, I'm just still encouraging you to have, somebody should be checking with the SLA on that to make sure that you're not, and just have it off business, off. So we are adjourned with this case. We look forward to seeing you at the next workshop. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, you made a motion. I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yeah, it was Andre who seconded it, and I think we took a vote. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. I think now we're legal. With that being done, I'm going to go ahead and close tonight's special meeting. And at the same time, I'm going to flip the gavel over and open tonight's workshop. So thank you, everyone, for being here with us tonight. And we're going to go ahead and continue to call the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first case on the agenda is a Scotch Plan Conference. Case number PB 2023-09-01. Request by Capstone Real Estate Development LLC, acting as agent for 550 Titus Avenue LLC, for Scotch Plan Conference to construct two multifamily apartment buildings totaling 16 market rate residential units on premises 550 and 560 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Thank you, and I know that, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say to Mr. Chairman and to staff, I do have a project that I'm working on with Mr. Thornton. We have no contractual relationship, so I don't believe, and I did talk to our town attorney, that there should not be any conflict there.
And as long as the applicant feels the same way, I'm sure that we're good.
Good evening, I'm Victor Thornton, with Thornton Engineering. We prepared the site plan for the applicant, Dr. Lash. You're also with me is Frank Jensen from CGS Architects, and, and where's, there's Brandon down there, Brandon Clark with CGS Architects. So we have the full team here, so hopefully we can address any of your concerns, or listen to what you have to say, and go back to our drawing boards and make whatever revisions are necessary. So obviously, very brief presentation. Hopefully, everybody has seen the plans, the submittals, the building floor plans and things. I will speak strictly to the site plan. I don't know anything about buildings, so I'll look at the site plans. We're dealing with two parcels, 550 and 560 Titus Avenue on the corner of Curtis Road. Some total of the two parcels, it's about one acre in size. They're both vacant parcels. What we are proposing to do is re-subdivide, move the lot line between the two parcels to create two equal parcels, each of about one-half acre in size. We're also proposing to construct an apartment building, actually, it's two apartment buildings, one on each parcel. Each one would be, I think, a little bit less than 8,000 square feet in size to be code compliant. The center wall on the building will be a party wall, common wall, firewall to separate the two structures. We're proposing access from Curtis Road, moving back a ways from the Titus Avenue intersection to improve traffic flow. By code, we need 1.5 spaces per apartment. We're proposing a total of 18 apartment units in the two buildings, which would require 27 parking spaces. We're proposing to provide 30 parking spaces, which would be handicap accessible spaces near the entrance to the buildings.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
You couldn't hear me, or am I, is this better? That's better. Thank you. I should ask for that. There is some vegetation on the parcels. We're trying to save as much of the existing tree cover as possible. There are a few scattered trees that would be removed either for the parking, for the aisles between the parking spaces, or for the building itself. So what you see here in the dark green are basically the existing trees, and we are proposing some landscape screening up in the northwest corner to screen the residential properties on the north and a little bit on the, on the west, on the west side of Curtis Other than that, I think everything that we're proposing meets code if, if the town interprets the code as we do. The lot frontage, I'll let Craig, I'll let you speak to the lot frontage in the building because I get a little confused with all that. But that's it in a nutshell, what's being proposed.
You want me to go? I got a few questions.
Anybody who asks questions, go ahead.
Sure. So I think, I think Mr. Thornton addressed this. I just want to make sure I understand this. So you're re-subdividing to create two equal lots so that the party wall can basically fall where you need it to and where you want it to, is that?
That is correct, right on the new property line, yeah.
And then, will you work out some sort of cross-access reciprocal easement type agreement for, I mean, you'll have to, but just making sure that we think about everything upfront. What about dumpster toters, refuse?
We are actually thinking the northeast corner near the exit.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's why I shouldn't talk about the building. This site.
We're proposing six, eight per lot, which would require 24 parking spaces by code. We have 30...
30, we have 30.
Also, we gave up those two, which still seem to require...
Okay.
Okay.
And typically, just, again, full transparency, typically we require some sort of a masonry or hard enclosure for dumpsters, so you're aware. Disturbance area?
Less than an acre, well, less than an acre.
That's the right answer.
I think we showed it on the plan, 75.75 acres, something like that.
Okay. You know, we, once we see a grading plan, we may still want to talk about some stormwater measures during construction, you know, just to make sure we don't have offsite runoff. But HVAC systems, any idea what we're doing?
Considering, of course, there are instantaneous hot water years in the closet inaccessible from the core, there was...
Okay. And then condensers would be roof? Roof, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Had a problem on a previous project, so we'd like to make sure we bring that up and ask that question.
Is that mic on? Is the red light on?
Oh, red is on.
Red is on.
Oh, I thought it was off. Turn it off, okay.
I just have two more, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll be quiet for a little bit. Since we just had a lengthy conversation about it, bike, bike storage, bike, is there any?
Bike racks.
Bike rack in the parking lot, or, and we may be able to provide some bike storage beneath the stairs.
Okay.
With interior.
And that's, and you can do that in lieu, especially based on the type of use. I think there's even wording related to that in the active transportation plan that talks for, you know, indoor storage.
We'll do both, probably, to be honest.
So, and then my last thing, and this is incredibly minute, my understanding is that handicap access aisles have to be eight foot wide. They appear to be six. It's a silly minor point. You've got tons of room to modify it if need be in your, your center kind of green island area, super minor, but...
We can do that. I think if it's van accessible spaces, it would be eight. I mean, we can make it eight.
Yeah, I, again, super minor point and technical. I think the New York State code trumps the ADA code on that and actually requires eight for everything, but you have tons of room, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
That's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Anybody can, this is a workshop. Handle loose.
No, my just main item was regarding just the northern end of the property and the existing, you know, tree line and vegetation there, because we have single-family residents. So I just pulled up a Google Street View, and it looks like most of the species there are deciduous, so maybe just putting in a couple conifers, just something year-round just to block headlights and noise and anything like that. And then lighting, is it just going to be building mounted, or are you going to have any poles out there?
Building mounted was our plan.
Okay, just making sure the fixture is screened.
Yeah.
Okay. Good-looking building, that's really all I have at the moment.
Yeah, and the lighting in the, the parking lot would be...
Well, I was envisioning building mounted, because I believe we have a street, if we have one on Curtis or not, to be honest, but we're not far enough away from the building that I think it's going to be an issue.
Okay, I mean, that would be preferable that, without poles, yeah. For you and probably the applicant. I don't have a whole lot of questions right at the moment. I know we've got a workshop still to go through and...
Yeah, we can speak to the building design if you want, if that's helpful, like we didn't talk about that, or we can just answer questions.
What's, what's the outside materials?
We're thinking it's a fiber cement panel at this point. You know, the renderings that you've seen are still conceptual, because we're trying to just get the kind of basic design here, but, you know, as Glenn was, I think, alluding to, we do meet all the setback requirements, we meet the height requirement, we meet the, you know, frontage requirement based on, you know, length of the initial lots. So I think, you know, in terms of all the, the kind of overall sighting of the building and its footprint, you know, we're in compliance, and now I think we're just going to work out the materials. We'd be, welcome, welcome your comments.
This is nothing we can control. What's the price point that you're looking at for this?
Probably in the $1,000 to $1,700 range.
So it's affordable and not, not super luxurious, right?
Market rate.
Market rate, yeah. Good, thank you. From market rate instead of affordable, yeah. Forgot, I didn't get that memo.
Yeah, I mean, aesthetically, I think it's, it's a nice, nice-looking facade. It's broken up here and there, you got some, I think, you know, conceptually, it's a great, great-looking facade.
Thank you.
One other site-related point as we move forward, and I know we will, staff will, I'd just be curious to see what fire service has to say about access, you know, how they're going to, I know it's a small lot, so they may just say that they'll fight it from the street, but I just want to make sure, you know, we've got fire apparatus.
By code, we should be okay from the street, but...
Yeah, it's a small enough lot that, yeah, yeah.
The way we laid out the parking lot, too, we thought, you know, if they did have to come in, they've got a in-and-out movement here. Hit the backfoul.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted, I noticed that. I like the access from Curtis instead of trying to build a, having to go to the county and...
Yeah, not along Titus, but we actually pushed it to the north to keep the lights out of the neighbors on the other side of Curtis, and to stop cars from stacking, coming off or on, just give them a little bit more room.
Great.
But I know that one of our former members, who's no longer on the board, would be very pleased to see that this follows the general idea of the comprehensive plan in the muck, where we have buildings up against the street facades parking in the rear, so I applaud and appreciate that. I know he would, too.
Thank you. And we do have entrances from both the street side and the parking lot side, so it's, you know, pretty pedestrian-friendly.
The other thing, just to get everything out on the tables, you know, the setback pretty much lines up, this is the Jason building to the east, and we tried to line up the setback...
I'm sorry, could you use the micro, use your mic, please?
It was holding up my paper. I'm sorry. Yes, as I was saying, the setback is similar to the building to the east. The other thing, we believe that we're fully compliant with the amount of building frontage on the street. I think 70% is required, and we exceed that. The way we interpreted the code, so if there's any, if we've got some poor interpretations, let us know, but we think, we think we're code compliant, so that was the game plan. I'm good if, I don't, anybody else that has any questions, just real casual.
On the Curtis roadside, you know, we have a lot of green space there, maybe something decorative, like a wrought iron fence, you know, just, you know, for a streetscape standpoint there.
Up in the city, yeah.
Yeah, and then just, you know, connecting back into the building, you know, so going like from the driveway south, and then doing a 90-degree back in the building, just to define the parking area a little better.
Okay.
And just give it that streetscape, you know, presence, because you've got a corner lot there.
That's nice.
I don't know, from my standpoint, I appreciate the well-thought-out and well-put-together, you know, concept plan. I think it's a great start.
Yeah. Thank you. Looks good.
Thank you. Can I ask a question, sir? Next steps for us, we will return in a month for our follow-up.
There would be a staff question.
Okay.
So it would be preliminary site plan, would be the next submission. The submission date is next week, the 26th. So I don't know if you guys could make, it's next week.
Preliminary...
It's hard, because September is a hard month because of the Labor Day holiday. It was like meeting, meeting, meeting.
And preliminary is typically a pretty much full-fledged set of finished site plans, right?
Yeah.
When we do preliminary, really, we only want hangovers that are like condition-based type things that we need to see. So a lot of times, we do do preliminary and final, not always, but if it's a well-put-together set of drawings, it's relatively common that we do preliminary and final. So it's just however you want to, I think, approach it, but, you know, it would need to be relatively put together in the next week.
Yeah, 95% of the time, we're able to do both things at once, but that really does make sure you guys are ready for it, too.
First, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Glenn, do your homework first.
Yeah, Glenn's got a week, what's...
What's a few more hours in a day?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I turned the microphone off for what I just...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for the next case.
Next case is case number PB 2023-06-2. Request by DH Lewis Engineering, PLLC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Glenn, do your homework first.
Yeah, Glenn's got a week, what's?
What's a few more hours in a day?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we're ready for the next case.
Next case is case number PB twenty-two-three dash oh-six dash two, request by DH Lewis Engineering, PLLC, acting as agent for nineteen forty-four Titus Avenue LLC, for subdivision approval and steep slope environmental protection overlay district permit to subdivide three point seven six-three acre parcel into three lots on premises nineteen forty-four Titus Avenue and in R-one residential district.
Good evening. Hear me?
Yep.
Okay. The last time I was here, uh, I think the remaining, or one of the glaring things was the, uh, location of the wetlands, and in the interim, we have had the, we'd hired BME to do a, a wetland delineation, and the results of that have been provided to the town engineer and the staff for, for review, and as we assumed or presumed, it was in the location we, we thought, down in the, in the furthest north part of the property, which should not affect the development, or the development should not affect it, as, as far away as it is, um, so we held off on doing any more revisions to the plans until the board had that information, um, knowing that next week is, is the, is, is your next meeting, because we don't have the two-week lapse there, um, but I discussed that with Michelle as far as getting the rest of the comments addressed and plans back to her and the town engineer to review, um, I do have comments from the county agencies as well, which were pretty much minor in nature as well, something I could handle very easily, so I guess I open up the board with any comments in regards to the wetland issue.
Sorry, I was trying to reread your cover letter, um, or BME's cover letter, I'm sorry, uh, so this is a, a state-regulated wetland, if I understand it, not federal?
Correct, so it doesn't have a buffer, that's correct.
So it'll have a hundred-foot, and you don't foresee that being any issue with a building lot?
It doesn't, it does not have a hundred-foot.
It does not?
Yeah, the federal, federal wetland is the actual line itself, that's correct. State wetland has the hundred-foot buffer.
Right, and it is state, right?
It's a, you know, it's a, it's not a state wetland, it's a federal wetland.
Well, the last sentence on the first page says disqualifies it from being considered a federal wetland.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Which would lead me to believe it's only a state wetland. And then the hundred-foot buffer would apply.
Hmm. I apologize for that. In, in any case, we're, we're three hu- we're over three hundred feet from it anyway.
It seemed like a big enough lot, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't foresee, you know?
Yeah, my, my concerns more was the pink line that's shown on the plan, was the, the stream corridor that, this, when the town engineer people had visited the site, that was more of the concern, I knew I was far enough away from what was down to the furthest north extreme of the property. Yes, yeah, we're three hundred and something feet away from that, correct.
Yeah, I, I think we saw something earlier on that showed, like, just rough buildings, was that, am I imagining that? Why do I seem to remember, right, I don't have all my old plans with me today, but.
You, you, you mean the, the original design that we had?
Yeah, that just showed, you know, rough idea of where houses might be.
Oh, no, we had full design.
We did, okay.
Full design plans, uh, Wes has already given me comments for all that, I got to help up.
And again, just, I'm sorry to be
Yeah, no, you're fine.
That horse here, but.
You're fine.
And there's no issue, as you see it, with the hundred-foot buffer?
No, not at all, no, not at all.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, not at all, yeah, we're, we're well, we're well away from that.
No, I know I ha- I forgot stuff when I ran out of my office today, I, I know I have them still, I save everything, so.
The, the, all of the development is from, almost from Halverne Cove to the south, just grading to get the one lot, we, we, we quickly pulled the house and the design right up toward Titus Avenue, there's just grading there to make the driveway work.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
You said you're concerned about the, um, ditch A, what's the concern?
No, that wa- that was where the delineation, they thought that was part of a wetland, but it's not, it's just considered a ditch.
Okay. I think that was my concern.
Did we talk, I'm sorry, I, I missed a couple of meetings, and my brain is trying to get back into a few of these projects, did we talk at one of the other workshops about doing a tree survey? Am I confusing my projects?
That doesn't necessarily, that doesn't sound familiar to me, we can go back in the notes, but I don't remember that.
Okay, I may be confusing it with another slope that we did.
Sorry to interrupt, we, we had done a tree survey.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, um, Heinrich Fisher had done a tree survey, in fact, I walked it with him.
Okay.
Yes, and we had marked all the trees out, and that what you see on the existing conditions plan and on the grading plan, the, the, a majority of the stuff in there has been either storm-damaged, uh, trees leaning on other trees, it really needs to be deforested, even if we didn't do anything with it, there's a lot of ratty stuff, um, undesirables, the ash, um, the willow trees are, you know, and they encompass everything and have taken over everything, and then there's stuff that's up, up towards, uh, Titus Avenue, we tried to maintain whatever was there, but even those are, you know, there's a large pine tree that's just, it's just waiting to be a problem later on, so I, 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 through my, on my grading plan and on my, uh, existing conditions plan, I tried to, I tried to show what was, I, I showed what we had, uh, inventoried on there, listed the trees, there's, there's a row of pines that are in there, but they're so overgrown on top of each other, um.
You can see it from Titus, when you look up that way, I know you can.
We walked it, it was, it's pretty, it's pretty ugly in there.
Christopher, from a conservation point of view, is there any concerns that we are not considering?
Yeah, so we just wanted to run through a couple of our original comments, so we made the comment about the wetlands, um, we did get the report, um, we had a couple of issues, just because it doesn't meet the criteria of like an actual wetlands report, like, it doesn't have photo documentation or anything like that that goes along with it, um, and some of the things, the, the area that we were concerned about, because we haven't been on-site, because we're not allowed to go on yet, um, but the, we had asked, and I don't know if it got ma- back to you, that if La Bella's wetland people could look at it, because we, not a wetland person, I just know enough to be dangerous with it, but I don't know, but we were looking at it, and we were like, well, you know, she called Fragmities through here, and she called that there's water, but, so why isn't it a wetland if you got two out of the three, but you don't have the third, so it was just kind of like, could somebody double-check that, just to make sure that that does make sense? Because I know there are rules too, you know, sometimes you can not count Fragmities, even though it's a wetland plant, but sometimes you do have to count it, and just that if somebody clarified that. We are, the Conservation Board itself is concerned about this property, just because if it's a high-value, headwaters to the Brook Trout, right? Yes? You're nodding. But it is a, it's a headwaters to the, to the, um, to the only place in Monroe County where there is Brook Trout sprouting, and the state wetland down at the bottom, and so that's also the wooded lot that is the back half, so the lower two, lower one parcel that comes to the end of whatever that street is.
Halverne Cove.
Halverne Cove, that's the, really, the only one that we have an issue with, I think the two up front are fine, um, but that back one where you're really into the woodlots, you're into the wooded area, you're into the headwaters, like, that's where we have concerns about, that there's some environmental protection things that we would prefer that not be developed at that one. But that's where we had.
Are there, I'm just asking the question, are there protection measures that can be put in place or not, in your, in, in the Conservation Board's opinion?
So the, the thing is like, so that's definitely a treeed lot, so that's where we had asked for, like, the actual tree inventory, and we saw that there were a handful of trees on there, but again, from what we were told from other staff, that didn't seem like the correct amount of trees that were on there, and that there are some very old, um, like, two-hundred-plus-year-old trees in that area that, you know, we want to make sure that we're protecting which ones are here and which ones are there, and then we have regulations within the woodlots, you know, we're trying to minimize the amount of clearing, you're going to have to offset with tree protections and adding trees in other areas, and what's the best way to do that in a area that's wet, treed, filled, steep slopes, like, there's pretty much all of our EPods lining up on that one spot, so it's.
So how do we, how do we try to reconcile a concern that the inventory, tree inventory may not be what someone thinks might really be out there, how do we reconcile that?
I mean, have, we would be open to, it's one of our issues is we've never been there, so it would probably resolve some of our issues, if the applicant was interested, and if the planning board was interested in taking a site walks, to kind of look at what areas that we're concerned about, you know, where the building would be located, if that makes sense, what types of disturbance that you're going to have on these areas, if we can get a better sense of it, as opposed to where the site plan, it looks like it's lacking, or we can't tell that it, but it seems like it's lacking, um, that would be helpful, um, but then otherwise, it's really kind of identifying, like, that's our biggest concern, is where are those trees, what are those real impacts, because it seems like it's more than what is being documented on the plans, at least from what we've been able to garner, and we know about the area without really being in there to look and see.
Right. Eric, do we have access to go on to the lot?
Absolutely.
We, we do, the Conservation Board does not, per town.
Yeah, no, I know that, I, I have not walked on.
It's silly, but.
The, where's the driveway then, for these properties going to, um, enter and exit?
The two, obviously, uh, the, the up, the southern lots are going to come off from Titus Avenue directly, and the lot that the Conservation Board has concern with comes right off the end of Halverne Cove.
Okay.
That driveway.
And.
Almost follows the same direction.
Do we have county comments then, yet on the Titus Avenue?
Yeah, they've been, it, it's gone to DRC.
And I, I probably have them in my packet, to be honest with you, I'm just asking.
Yeah, John Raymond provided comments.
So you're going to head south with both of those, are they going to be a common, are you going to?
Separate drives.
Two separate drives, okay. And, um, for the Lot One, do you have an idea of where you want to place the house?
It's on the site plans provided.
Yeah, we, we have those.
We have full site, I've submitted full site plans.
They're not in the, the
They're in the old packet.
They're in the old packet.
Yeah, from, the packet from June.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, which I know I still have at home.
So my, my, my only last thing then, on the conservation, just to bounce back to that, would it be possible to get on the, what, what are we calling that back lot, is that Lot?
Lot One.
Lot One. Would it be possible to get the corners of the proposed structure staked? As, as, you know, corners or ten-foot offsets or something, so that we could kind of get an idea, and then can we, what's the mechanism to get conservation to be able to walk the site?
I believe in the past, you guys have invited us on walks.
Okay. Because I mean, I think.
That invitation has just been extended.
I think, I think, I mean, to me, that is my only concern on this entire thing, I think everything else, again, I got to go back and look at those plans, but it's not like we're really doing full site plan, I know we have EPod stuff that we're looking at here, but it's really all that Lot One thing, and I just want to make sure that we're mitigating concerns, right, and that we're, we're plugging those up to make sure we're all happy.
And yeah, sometimes we get out there and, and it's perfectly fine, but like, based off of the information that we have and what's being told to us from a variety of other sources, we're like, this seems like it should be protected, and this seems like it should be, uh, uh, developed differently, or not developed, or whatever, but.
One or two of us can walk with you.
Sure.
Okay.
And get that, yeah.
Because I, I mean, if, in, in my opinion, and I'm one person, but if we can get past that hurdle, I, my recollection of the plans before were that they were very well put together, and
Yeah.
Had a lot of really good information, you know, I'm going to lean on the board that is the board that should be really commenting on this stuff, it's not my fault at all, so.
I agree, my concern is Lot One from the start, is that, that wetland period.
Yeah, because I can see two and three basically from Titus, when I've looked up there, I just haven't walked all the way back through.
Lots that should have been done years ago, seems like there's.
Yeah, I mean, certainly those two feel like a no-brainer to me, based on the area.
The end of Halverne Cove was supposed to come out there at one point, but obviously, it was way too busy of an intersection to have more.
Oh, and do another subdivision, got it.
There's old, there's old plans that showed townhouses in this, this section of the property, too, it just, you know, which is almost ridiculous, but.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one quick one, and, um, I don't have the EPod regulations in front of me, but is there any requirement, you know, at least as it relates to Lot One, for providing, say, a conservation easement over those areas, you know, since we got the wetland and other environmentally sensitive areas?
I don't think we have any regulations for requiring conservation easements, um, it's kind of like a little bit of latitude in that the, these areas that are designated as the overlay districts, that we have the purview of recommending what types of things we want to see, and what types of development we want to see in those areas, so if, um, I know in some of the other ones, we had said, like, okay, you can clear a couple of these trees, these ones you cannot, you're going to have to, you know, add additional trees in other areas, um, things like that, mostly for the, for the tree areas, in the wetlands, we tend to, you know, protect them, um, if you have to mitigate, then you're going to go through either DEC or Army Corps, um, streams the same way, like, it would be really protecting them.
Great, anybody else? I think we'll see you in a week.
Well, I'm, I, I guess we don't want to proceed with making plan revisions until we get, have the walk, I mean, because.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to say our board is not prepared to go out within a week, we can, we don't move that quickly, but, um, yeah, if we could find a couple of dates to go, that would be good, I don't know what the rules are necessarily, but I think the only other ones we have been on, some of you have gone with us, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, I can, if I know the date, I can try to be there, and just know what we're talking about, I'll try to be there.
Yeah, just knock on my door, I'm good.
I'm more than happy to accommodate whatever your schedule is, I believe, though, that this has been advertised as a public hearing for next week?
It has, but I can revise the agenda, if you, if you're not planning on coming back, you're going to postpone.
The revisions, I wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know.
Right.
Depends on where this.
Do the site walk first?
Yeah.
You gave permission to give the site walk first.
More sense to.
So I can have board members attend, I can't have more than three at one time, you know that, we can't have a quorum, as well as Conservation Board members, who are ever going to walk the site, um, if people want to give me some dates.
Sooner than later, please.
Sooner than later, because this is from June still.
Just have, you know, have the Conservation Board, in my opinion, come up with what works, three, give us three dates that they can do it, and we'll find three people, or two even, from the board that can make it work somehow.
And they can be our eyes and ears and
Yeah.
Get the rest of us the information.
And then report, report back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm willing to go, and I've got some flexibility. Except for tomorrow, I'll say that.
So I, also, board members, please let me know if you need the additional site plan.
Okay, I've got mine at home, I know.
Want to make sure that you have it all?
I hung on to it, because it was one we, we weren't through with, so.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'll work with the Conservation Board members, and then I will, um, send you an email to let you know when they'll be, um, doing the site visit, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we, or we can talk over here and try to decide if they're still here for other agenda items.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we definitely will see you sometime for the walk, and then in October for the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
So next case on the agenda is case number PB twenty-two-three dash oh-nine dash oh-two, request by Basfano and Associates, Inc., acting as agent for Aranacoy Plaza LP for preliminary site plan approval for relocation and construction of a new plus-or-minus thirty-two-hundred-square-foot Citizens Bank retail branch on premises five in a C business district.
Good evening.
Evening.
None of us are going to open up the full set, we're going to
That's fine.
Look at the smaller set.
This is our time here, so I, I think, I think we're all friends now, so. All right, so I'm Matt Silva, if you guys don't remember, but, um, so as Michelle mentioned, we're here for the Citizens Bank, so we're going into, uh, a workshop for the Sketch Plan Conference, and really, since you guys are familiar with the site already, what I'd like to do is kind of just run through some of the changes that we've had, uh, from the positive feedback from our last workshop, and just to kind of show you guys what it is that we've changed and what was modified, uh, from the last meeting, overall, it's primarily the same, um, but I think the biggest comment we've gotten was probably about the dumpster enclosure, so we did change that, so we'll, we'll get to that, too.
I like the way you phrased it, the positive comment from the last meeting, that.
It's, it's all about the delivery. All right, so if, if we start on CO-two-oh-one, the enlarged, uh, construction plan, I did want to touch base on a few items, based on the requirements for the preliminary site plan, uh, adjustments, one of them was relative to the grade points, so if you'll notice that, we did maintain primarily the locations of the existing topo lines, we did modify them slightly, uh, just to ensure seamless transition points, and to make sure that we have a compliant two-point-zero-percent maximum cross-slope across the proposed ADA spaces, um, so really not a huge change there relative to the, to the site, we're trying to be very cognizant. We're trying to be very cognizant of the stormwater runoff, uh, and of course, the site is very flat already. Like I mentioned, we did modify the dumpster enclosure, so that's no longer on the northeast corner. Later on in the set, uh, you'll see that we also included a view. I think that was one of the board's requests, just to make sure that we have that, that nice view corridor from the entrance. So we did switch to hand barrels instead of the dumpster enclosures, so that's been modified. And we do have that now along the back service area, uh, entrance of the branch and covered with some privacy fencing. So that's one of the larger changes that we had made. If we go to CO 302, um, that is the enlarged landscaping plan. Uh, along the west facade is that adjustment that I had just mentioned. So some of the permeable surface was modified. We did extend the concrete pad in order to incorporate the new location for the trash. And on CO 402, these are the views that I was just mentioning. So item one, the entrance view is that request that we had gotten last time. Uh, and this is really showcasing the entrance from that secondary entrance into the plaza towards the corner of the main portal of the entrance to Citizens. All right. AO 201 and AO 401, so those are relative to the schematic design plans. I, I know that was part of the submission request. I just wanted to point out that it's still undergoing approval with Citizens. This is a typical branch of the way it's laid out, so I don't expect it to change all that much. We have all of the front of house program, uh, towards the, the main entrance, towards the, the, uh, main portion of the space. All of the service areas are towards the plaza area. It does need to be approved, same thing with the ceiling plan, so it might change slightly. If it does, the footprint of the bad site will not change. Uh, it would just modify the partitions on the interior relative, relative to what we've already established. And honestly, I think that's, that's pretty much it relative to what was requested to be adjusted last time. Uh, we did also include a signage package, um, that you guys might have received. The Citizens vendor is gonna submit this separately under a different permit, but since there were some questions on that, we wanted to at least give you a little bit of awareness as to what they're currently proposing. Because it is tied in, uh, pretty strictly to the architectural features relative to how the signage and the architectural items are gonna play against each other. I think, I think that's pretty much it. So if you guys have any questions, happy to field any answers.
I have two. It's the theme of the night, uh, bike rack?
I have it in my notes, yeah. So we can, we can certainly add that in.
Find a place somewhere.
My, so my question back to you. Certain jurisdictions, jurisdictions require like we use like city bike or those little like mopeds. Is it just a bike rack and?
Yeah, this is, this is just for, you know, it can be the, the loop one, I mean, whatever. It's just, you know, something so that we have someplace for.
Not, not an issue.
True residential users, none of the electric things or anything. And then my other question, and I, I may have missed this in one of the previous times you were here. Where did we end up with the whole RTS, RGT, GTA?
Is there a letter that you guys secured or?
The last time we were here, we had representative from Flum, uh, Tim Leathers. So he did indicate that at least for the bus station, uh, there were already ongoing conversations about relocating it. Same thing for the EV stations. So they're in, in considerations and conversations with them, uh, for a possible relocation. Uh, I guess ultimately the, the lease was with them and the, the bu, the bus station and that's, that's really all I know. But from the conversations that you guys had last time, it sounded like it was a consensus that they were okay to move ahead as they had already planned.
Yeah, it did, that's, I mean, one of my big concern, that's one of the busiest, um, bus intersections. Our terminuses in the city.
I, I received confirmation today from an engineer that that will be forthcoming before the planning board for a sketch plan, I believe in October.
Okay, great.
You have a new location, new hub.
So I'm just, this is a, not really for the applicant per se, but how do we handle that from an approval standpoint, right? So to me, it's critically important and or conditioned, but I understand it's not their property, not their use, you know, but that get, that both the EV and the bus gets relocated. If we don't know that by the time we're trying to approve their thing, how, but we can't really condition them to do something that they have no control over.
Well, this is very similar to the dumpster for Blue Palm.
I find it even, even, even further away because it's, it's, it's not even the same site. It's not this, it's not even related to them in any way, shape or form. They're just displacing it because of the location, which is, I understand completely why that's the location for this.
But, but kind of is because we have, we have residents take the bus to get to Citizens Bank.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's, here's my thought on that, Spencer. If we had a memo from the landlord or RGR TA or both that indicated that they are in talks now that the end result would happen would be good enough for me and now that I know that it's gonna be on October's.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Board, I'm really.
I missed one of those meetings, I think when Flum was here.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think, I don't know who, who owns, who manages the EV stations? Cause at one time, early on when I was here.
EV stations are owned by RGR TA. They got the grant money to install them.
Thank you, I didn't realize that.
They will be moving those along with the, um, the, the bus stop itself. And my guess is they'll probably have the, um, accessories like the mopeds and the electric bikes right there, which would make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah.
But, um, RGR TA owns the, uh, the charging stations.
Okay, okay.
So I'm good with just knowing that they're in conversations to, and that, but now that I know that it's on October, I think I'm really, and thank you for the switching over to the, uh, toters. It changes things for you a lot better. I couldn't imagine that a bank branch generates that much garbage anymore. Really?